I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the mayor council of the town of Berlin for July 26, 2021. Before we get started, I'm going to ask Jeff to go through the housekeeping items.
What you'll find, folks, on the back table, you'll find the hand sanitizer and rubber gloves if you should see any to that. Out in the hallway, you will find a restroom. There is soap, paper towels, and warm water. Should you at any point choose to leave the meeting, you can go out down through the stair tower again, just hit the panic door on the door and go out the door.
And there's copies of the agenda back there.
And copies of the agenda on the back table. Thank you.
Before we start, as a council, I would like to publicly wish our mayor, who is absent this evening, our best wishes and a speedy recovery. For those of you that do not know, he has had an encounter with some canines, and it didn't turn her too well. So I just want him to know that we wish him the best. And for those of you that would like to, would you join me now and get a moment of silence, followed by the pledge? Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In keeping with the agenda, item number one, approve of the regular session minutes of 7:12:21.
Motion approved. Second?
It has been moved in second that the minutes of 7:12:21 be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show that the minutes were approved unanimously with council member Troy Burnout absent. And now we're going to skip to item number three because the fire department has been unavoidably detained. So we're going to start with Dave.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. This item is an EDU or allocation agreement of an EDU between the town and the Autozone site, the property at 10712 Potion Gateway, which is the site where the old McDonald's used to be. If you've been by there the last few days, you see that that's been demolished. And this is really a housekeeping item. Usually, we do the allocation agreements when we're at the point of permitting. We've done them already. They have paid for the EDU. It's one EDU based on the Maryland Department of the Environment Guidance Document for that type of retail location. It only counts as one EDU. They paid for it when they secured their permits. And when this came up, we were actually not in open meetings yet. So this is, as we call it, a housekeeping item. Once we have your motion to approve, we will execute signed documents. We get the originals signed by the principals of Autozone, and they have a copy of this now. I'm waiting for the signed copy to come back. Their development officer thought I'd have it for the meeting tonight, but he didn't get it to me by 5 o'clock. He said he knows it's in the signing stage down there, and they're in Memphis, Tennessee, their headquarters. So as soon as we have that back and your motion be forwarded from tonight, we would have the mayor and Mr. Fleetwood sign off on it. Kelsey and I will send it or take it down to the county clerk in Snow Hill, and it gets recorded. And this is pretty much standard we do for every commercial allocation of EDUs in town for every project. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah. Dave, what's the cost of an EDU?
Total water and sewer combined is $16,686.
And in the event that they use more than the allocated, what is it, 250 gallons per bay, does that get adjusted?
If you go to page two, item four, it explains that we have a 24-month metering period. It's the same for all. And if it's discovered that they are typically over, we will go back to Water Resources and myself, Mr. Fleetwood, we will go back to them and say, you need to purchase another EDU or purchase two more EDUs, whatever the case may be. It's borne out by our metering from the billing department.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dave?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Autozone for one EDU.
It has been properly moved in second that this, that the EDU for Autozone be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number four of the agenda, motion 2021-16, Henry Park Basket Bone Horse Painting Project, We Heart Berlin.
You ready for us?
Yes.
I have a last-minute email that came in from the director of Parks and Recreation for the town of Easton. I'm going to get you guys back to it.
Oh, cool.
So I just sent her an email with a few questions. I just wanted to see what her input was, albeit very brief. She's very busy. She did give us some answers. Just sort of give us the, what working with Mr. Hawkins is like, what the reaction of the community's been, sort of the exposure that it's given. They had their courts painted just like ours. And to start, I guess we'll have Adrian kick it off and tell everybody what we're planning on doing and how it started, and I'll pick up after that.
This all started, I was inspired by Mr. Hawkins. He did in Easton back in 2019, and he also did another court in Painters. I seen that, contacted him, asked him how he went about it, because just being someone who grew up around this area, it played a lot of his part. I started to see the park being used for the wrong things, in the wrong way, treated disrespectfully somewhat. Nobody stepped foot on the court to play basketball. So I felt like this right here, talking to Mr. Hawkins and seeing what it did for the basketball park in Easton, I wanted to try to do the same thing, to kind of bring the life back to his part.
As other parks through Project Backboard have seen, sort of embellishing existing courts with art installations drives attention, it drives new life, and sort of gives the kids that are there during this period sort of a new sense of ownership for a new beautiful thing that they're sort of in charge of. And that's what we hope to bring with this. I'll rewind a few minutes back to where he started and say, I saw Adrian sort of wanting to get this done right in the infancy of our newly-formed 501(c)(3) nonprofit that we just got today in the mail from the IRS. So I knew that We Heart Berlin was going to be able to do this and help bring this idea to fruition. So I said, hey, Adrian, you want to do this? Do you want to be a board member? Come on, let's go do this. So we are hoping, because they've now, they presented to the Parks Commission, and the Parks Commission gave it a thumbs up. We are here asking for your blessing to help us get permission to make this happen at Henry Park and help us sort of put the spotlight back there and, you know, good light. And we're here to take your questions and give you some good answers.
I just have a couple. Love the design. And for the future maintenance, just kind of like touch-up paint, is that something that We Heart Berlin is planning on doing?
So long-term, ongoing maintenance, I don't know if we, as an organization, can say that we can always be there every year to do that or raise money for that or whatever. But if the towns, if the town needs us to go out there and touch up the paint, I will certainly go out there, or Adrian will certainly go out there and touch up the paint. You know, the lady from the town of Easton said that they kept some of the buckets of paint, the extra paint, so they could do touch-ups.
Yeah, that's...
I would have an artist do it or one of us do it, sure. I mean, I'll sign up for it, doesn't matter, it's right around the corner from my house. But as far as maintaining it, it would be maintained just like the basketball court is maintained now. The last time it was painted was eight or nine or 10 years ago. So it hasn't had a touch-up in years, so I don't know why this new paint would need to be followed in a touch-up scenario as an immediate need, other than for the beauty of it. So yes, of course, if it's ours to take care of, then of course we'll take care of it. But it is town property, so we have to sort of work out how that works out, where the paint gets stored and all that jazz.
Oh, sure.
Who knows where the paint's stored now for the green and the red, and it's worn off in places, but still there. So how we'll do it, I don't know, but if he wants to help, we'll help.
Okay. And then the, this might sound like a silly question, but with this type of paint, and we're going to talk about it later, and you kind of mentioned it with the term spotlight, any potential lighting of this basketball court, is that going to, is there going to be like a glare?
No, 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 no.
For the user, for the...
This is paint made for this. This is a silica, has silica embedded in the paint to give it that sort of friction that it's already got now from the paint that it currently has.
Okay.
Sort of the same application, it's just got brighter, more vibrant colors and sort of a pattern versus the other way. And, you know, obviously here, as We Heart Berlin, we are fully in support of the lights at Henry Park, if that isn't clear. That's a very good thing to have at the top of our list.
Now, that's, that was all the questions I had.
The cost on this is what?
So the total cost on this is $9,000. That's paint and to Mr. Hawkins. We have to date raised $4,500 through what's your county arts commission? $4,500 matching dollars from what used to be Berlin Arts and Entertainment, where they're now called Artistry. And thank you to both of those organizations for giving us the $9,000 we needed for the base. And through the community, we've raised $2,000. So we've envisioned that $2,000 being the extra money that we're going to need for, you know, oh crap, we need some extra paint, or oh crap, we need water that day, or oh crap, we need to set up tents for the kids. Some sort of community involvement's going to be there for the painting of the day. So we've just got a buffer of dollars that came into the community, so we'll be covering all of that.
Jimmy, do you have any input on this?
I do have a question, I guess. To remove what's there now, would there be additional cost to that?
No move.
I guess, is there additional cost to remove it? Because I assume the money you raised for the gentleman who's going to paint is just to reapply. So is there additional cost to remove what's there?
So our court, we were told by Mr. Hawkins, is the best one he's run into yet. The surface might need a cleaning, but that's it. And we're going to go over top of what's there with the new paint. So it's not a removal process, it's just an application over top.
So with the application, who's going to apply? Who's going to...
So Shelton and his artist go and make a grid of the whole thing, and they lay out all the lines with chalk. Shelton comes in and cuts in all of the lines to make them all perfect on the first day, then they, or however many days it takes to call all those in. And then the community, myself, Adrian, whoever else was coming out.
That's what I was curious about.
Oh, we're asking for it.
Are you looking for a vested interest from the people, the children, the people, the community, those that make up the community?
Yes. Once we're approved...
And one thing I wanted to use this for was, I am an assistant teacher at Worcester Tech with Auburn. And what I run into is a lot of our kids need community service hours. So what I wanted to do was use this as a tool for them to get community service hours, mainly the youth as a tool for that, and also community, everybody coming together in the community as well.
As soon as we have, you know, a yes and a date, we're going hard in the community to ask them to all come out and help that day, that week. It's going to take all of us to paint it.
How long of a time span are we looking at for the, from the start to finish?
Shelton says it's about three weeks to a month before it's cleaned, finished, cooked, painted, dry, done. We don't need to clean apart done. We're sort of an early, quick clean, paint for a week, cure for a week. I believe there's an application of something on top of that. I'm not positive on that note there, but it was a week of painting and a week of curing, then you can use it. It seemed to be about three weeks. It seemed to be about three weeks, and we're going to be out of the court.
Do you have suggestions on how to stop traffic on that court for the curing period? Being there's no gated areas?
True. You know, besides yellow tape, I don't have any great ideas, other than involving the kids there and saying, guys, look, this is what we're doing, and we really need your involvement, we really need everybody to play well here. And that's, we hope for the best. I mean, it's Berlin, it's a good place. But that could just be fine with Scott. I think once we get the involvement from the community, they see what we're doing, I think it'll be okay.
Well, just knowing and being from the community playing out there, we're looking for September, October.
September.
There is no foot traffic at all on those courts in those little months. There's barely any foot traffic right now, only if there's a program going on. Other than that, there's nothing, there's no foot traffic going on on the court.
And September, October?
Second and third week of September and October, or second and third week of September is what we've blocked in with Mr. Hawkins. Those two weeks are on his calendar for us here in Berlin to get our stuff done. We're hoping it's a rain, we don't have to use a rain week, we're not dealing with rain in that time period. Part of the funding is that we need to do it during those weeks, because we told them that's what we're going to do it. We can change that, obviously, but that's sort of our timing, because once school's already started, it's not getting much daytime traffic, and it's something we can all do together.
Tony, I just want to say thank you to you, Adrian, and anybody involved in this project. Wonderful project. It's amazing you raised all the money to make it happen. This is community involvement at its best. Well done.
I appreciate you.
As it stands now, is there any town event scheduled for that time that would be utilizing the park?
Not that I know of, sir, no. The events going on during those weeks are happening in the commercial district downtown.
And I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I'm so glad to hear that you received your nonprofit certification today. That does me really good. And when you made your presentation, you talked about Adrian doing this and you doing this, but in organizations, people sometimes change. I'm looking for a commitment from, from We Heart Berlin that, that the representations you made this evening are representative of the organization. And it's not your personal commitment I'm looking for. I'm looking for a commitment from the organization. Now, that is, that is right. And like Jay said, I think this is a splendid idea. And the name of the organization is, is just so, so innovative. But I watch Bob Hart at the show, and so, so, so the We Heart Berlin thing really says a lot. And I wonder if there are any more questions?
I just have one. Great concept. That just sounds on the back, and they all have good stuff, but I guess my fear is, taking the comment that you made, that the courts are in the best shape this guy is seeing. What happens if this, for lack of, I don't know how to put the words the way I want them to come out, but what if this paint goes down, and what if we have an issue with the paint? And what, from the guy doing the work, is there some assurance from him?
That's a great question. I don't have any sort of assurance or insurance from him as far as this. I only have his track record in the current courts that he's just finished, that are all still going, three or four years later.
Is the norm between Cambridge and Easton about three, four years?
Oh, so Cambridge has been, or Easton's been up since 2019. Other projects, other courts have been done. The guess is five to eight years on how long it will last before it needs to be sort of looked at again, past touch-ups. I don't know the answer. As the president of We Heart Berlin, I can say the new organizations, of course, are going to be super involved in all the things we start and do. We're not stopping with the basketball courts. We're coming for ping pong court, we're coming for skate park. So we're going to be involved in all of that. I can't say that I'm going to be the maintenance guy for any of those things, I'm not a maintenance guy. But I can say that if we need to raise money to get the paints, get the courts repainted, we are a money-raising machine that can absolutely drum up the dollars. We'll definitely stand by that forever. That's what we are. So that's my only answer to that, and that's a big question.
Jeff, question for you. Who on your staff do you see have this passes coordinating this activity with the town?
It's going to be between Mr. Charles, Mary, myself, and We Heart Berlin.
Order.
Any more questions?
Plot up comment.
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't know by now, you will know in a minute. I am here off of the community, the kids, the parents, those folks, as well as all this other stuff. But my thought to you, my comment to you today, last week, next month, is the community buy-in. You say it, and I believe you when you say that, but I want to, I can't scout promise you into it, but I want to hold you guys at reaching out to the folks in the community, the children, the adults, the parents, the stakeholders, so that those, so that they can play a part in the curation of this and your future endeavors, so that that will help. Or in my thoughts, what I've seen in the past is, once I've played a part in it, I take partial ownership, and I'm going to make sure that this, so I applaud it, and I think that this will, this can do great things, get those kids, children, I like the word kids, get those children and their families, will definitely...
I have a question. And that was, that was one of the main reasons, because I would say getting the community involved will give a sense of pride, ownership, like, hey, I was involved in this. I, I worked with Worcester County Parks and Recreation. My real smallest, having to work with kids on Saturdays doing a basketball league. I pull up this Saturday, and when I tell you there was Chinese trash all over the place, from Chinese food, I mean, all over the place, by the court, on the court. So my kids helped me pick up the trash, because they know how I feel about the basketball court. My daughter goes into the bathroom, the bathroom, she said, there's Chinese trash all in the bathroom. So when I, when I think there's no, there's no sense of saying, hey, man, I had a hand in this, so we need to treat this a little better. So I think that having the community involved and the kids involved, and just put a little bit more respect into the park.
Ivy's got her hand trying to say something back there.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ivy.
I love, I love this idea. One of the questions that I had, though, usually when I get involved in a project, I'll use the farmer's market as an example. I reached out to the farmers, and I reached out to the community to find out what the community wanted. And I'm curious to know, I see kids playing basketball at those courts all the time, and I was so tempted to take this picture and go over and say, so what do you guys think about this? Did you do that, and what were some of the comments? I want to hear how excited the kids were about this happening to the courts that they play on.
Well, this is presented, there's a, if you can see, I don't know, you might can't see it, but there is a name on the court called Basic. That was started a few years ago by Mr. Burnout Fisher. It got kids that are involved in the community. It's pretty much put like, a lot of emphasis on being respectful, doing your homework, being a student athlete, things like that. He also presented it to his group, and there was a lot of excitement for them to get involved anyway. And also, they wanted to, they want to see a new change. Like I said, I work with kids on Saturdays doing basketball, and they seen it, they're excited.
That's good. That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
I had one girl tell me, I don't know who the teacher is, but she said that my teacher presented it to, she knew I played basketball out there. Her teacher showed her and said, oh, what else is my basketball good? So she's excited about it, yes.
That's great. Thanks, Adrian.
I've even spoken to some old-school heads from Berlin that, you know, played basketball as kids there, you know, and showed them this, and they're, they're super excited, because a lot of the draw for this, why I hope to see out of this, Ivy, is something that you may have to manage. And that's a three-versus-three basketball tournament that could happen at a place that's freshly painted, because you've got, what will happen inevitably is hype around this. This will bring media attention. We've been getting calls and emails from media about this. So we know that this is going to create attention, it's going to drive interest in that, in my, in the east side of town. It's going to get lights, help us get lights on the east side of town. It's going to do all the things that I want to do.
One thing I wanted to ask you, Tony, you've got an excellent board of directors that you listed in your information. How often do you meet as an organization?
We meet once a month.
Once a month.
The only reason we didn't meet last month is I was traveling, but every other month we've met, so.
Very good.
Once a month.
And I just wanted to say that if the timeline, if the passes and the timeline holds true for September, with coordinating with chief, of course, National Mayhem is coming up, and that might be a good opportunity to kind of...
What day is that?
I think it's about this third.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? Yeah. That'd be a great way to get some...
So that could get the word out, just a suggestion.
Yeah, hopefully that we need help.
And with that, if there's no questions, I'm going to...
Just one quick question. When you applied for your 501(c)(3), that was the end of February?
The date was...
March 14, I believe.
So we're talking four, five months is how long you took?
Five months, yes.
Is that what I needed to know?
Yeah, definitely.
Could we get a copy of that, just wherever?
We do have it.
It's in the background.
It literally just shouldn't have been...
Great job. I like your efficiency. And like Mr. Morel said, we truly appreciate your bringing that to the table when you sit down. Right, Mr. Morel?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and make my...
You have a little oil in there.
Just to point the Parks Board, most of our, a lot of our information comes from walking down the street, the public comes up and makes a comment and stuff. We've heard, I've had a few questions about it, and I think the maintenance has been the big question that I've received from the public. Like you say, these are informal things for walking down the street, Upshore, Bruce, and Patricia, they experienced the same thing. And that was the main question we had from the public after they read about it in the paper and stuff, was the long-term maintenance and further down the road. So that's what the public's generally asking.
Yeah, and I think, I think that we've discussed that.
Yeah, I mean, I asked Zach, I said, do you know the last time it was painted? He said it had to have been before him, because it hasn't been painted any time during his tenure or anything he remembered.
When they were renovated, that was 2013.
So it was before Zach's time, and he didn't know. So I said, you know, maintenance has never been thought of anyway. So now, we're actually going to have a reason to think about maintaining that parking. To your point, Jeff, real quick, he said, Mr. Fleetwood, he said Shelton did. The reason why, what he was talking about so much, the beauty of our park, was we've already got benches, it's right next to the highway, it doesn't have any ripples or bumps or anything like that. Shelton's cousin died in Easton on the basketball courts because of the way the courts were, it was terrible, it was rippled, and he tripped, fell, hit his head, and passed away. I'm serious. So this is what started his mission to make this happen, why he started doing, adding the basketball courts. So this is just a theory of that.
Well, I'm going to, on a happy note, I'm going to make a motion that we approve motion 2021-16 for the basketball court's painting project at Dr. Henry Park. I'll second that one.
It has been moved and properly seconded that this motion be approved to paint Henry Park basketball courts facilitated by We Heart Berlin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your eyes have it. The motion... Your eyes have it. The motion passed to be made and was taken by the fire company.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Much, Mary.
Can I say this before you guys, please sit down for a second? Only 35 seconds. When you have your true date set up, will you please make us aware so that we too may be aware?
Of course.
We might want to roll our sleeves without our caps on.
Without question. You, you know the three of you are going to get a text message, of course. If I wasn't here, you'd be getting them right now. So, yes.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yes.
We're, we're going to, uh, go back to item number two. I think Dave come in, so, uh, we will have the President of Portland, the presentation, President Dave Fitzgerald be part of, part of.
Thank you, Travis. Thanks for adjusting your schedule. Just knew we had a house fire, so excuse our appearance. I sweat.
Well, thank you for being able to, to get out. We appreciate it.
So, so this is our quarterly update, and the mayor had asked us, and we usually do, provide into a time-track summary. So we've got Chief RJ Road, he's going to go through the fire present, presentation stats. He'll give, first for the quarter, and then he'll give the yearly totals, and then I'll do the administrative ones.
So, uh, for the first, or, excuse me, for the quarter, April 1st through June 30th, uh, our company responded to 31 calls in town and 48 calls out of town. Um, and the end of year, July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, we responded to a total of 125 fire calls in the town limits and 217 calls out of town limits. That's just the fire calls. That's not EMS. April through June 20th, fire and rescue are busiest days for Tuesday, followed by Fridays and Saturdays. Busiest times are between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m., followed by the 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. timeframe are busiest times. From July 2020 to June 2021, busiest days were trending at Tuesday, followed by Fridays and Saturdays. The busiest time of days were between 3:00 and 4:00 p.m. and 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Followed by. Between April and June of 2021, the average response time was 3.48 minutes. We also have a piece of fire apparatus responding to a call. And for the year, between July 2020 and June 2021, the average time was 3.57.
Our revenue budget highlights for the past quarter, the year, April, June, as I mentioned before about the chicken barbecue, uh, our net was about $1,100 for that. And then we had the W.R. Fireman Association banquet, that was around $5,000. The expense highlights for the quarter, uh, we had, I think I mentioned it just at the last meeting, we were just finding out about it, a light tower repair on one of our engines. That was a $10,000 repair. Uh, just on June 29th, we had HVAC failure repair. It was a 16-year-old unit, $6,000 to replace. And we had a computer server that was, we were hoping to get 15 years out of it. It was a nice climate-controlled environment, but it failed and it was $14,000. Capital budget updates that we mentioned before, breathing apparatus and capital improvements, and we will be working with you on that. Highlights for the year on the budget, we mentioned before, our donations were slightly higher, about $8,000. Unfortunately, had several prominent members of the community and members of our fire service that passed away. And that's how we receive those in the world donation. So we'll say a new, uh, type of people that contribute as a world donation to this, I'm ready to seize. So that helps make up for deficits, not, not in whole, but our fundraisers, which you're all aware of the restrictions on that, that we rate those to your fundraisers, the hall conference center, and then, uh, the ice rink. And we are talking to the county about the ice rink again, but where it comes, uh, we can bring that back to the world, so that we have a good community and firehouse.
Can I ask you about the ice rink before you go in for a moment? We cut you off. With that one, I'm trying to remember, was it two months or was it longer than two?
We had, we had, I believe, did you stress it? I remember we chose to COVID, but I do believe we had committed at that time, because it was so brand-new to the county, we had committed at pretty late in time, I think it was close to two months or three, I think. With the popularity of it, talking with the coordinator out there, and they've had some change in leadership of the county level of parks and that, so when we revisit it, it's going to be a shorter period of time. Uh, we also have to be aware of, you know, our members' time, because now they have a better handle on the operations, how many people we need to operate it. So it actually increased a little bit, uh, from talking to them a year ago, because it was new. Now they have some experience, and it does take a few more people than they thought. With the safety of people at the ring, people taking attendance, you know, if you're collecting an donation in the door. And then they say the bottleneck is, uh, the fitting of the skates. It takes long, because people think they know the shoe size. They'll tell you seven, and you give them seven, no, they need an eight. They said that's the bottleneck, so.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have to work with this faculty on that. Uh, and then the expense highlights, uh, we had mentioned earlier in the year, the computer failures, and then the ones I just mentioned. And, uh, we're preparing for FY '22, cost increases, uh, even after the budget's been approved. And you all see gas jumped $10 today. And we've got a couple vendors that sent us an email just this week about some cost increases coming. So we'll hold on as early as FY '22. It just started first month. And then our EMS captain, he's working a 36-hour shift at his job, so pitch it for him on the emergency medical services. Uh, so first quarter in-town EMS calls, 255, 56.7% out of town, 195. For the fiscal year, 979 in-town, 57%, and 740 out-of-town. Transports of those calls, people have transported to hospital in-town for the quarter, 186, 72.9%, and 69 were not transported out-of-town, was 111, 61. For the fiscal year, in-town calls, 700 transported, 71.5%. And non-transports, 279. Out-of-town was 455, transported 285, not transported. For EMS for the quarter, Thursday was the busiest day, followed by Saturday. Busiest time for the quarter, 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning, followed by 10:00 to 11:00. And for the fiscal year, Thursday was the busiest day overall in the fiscal year, followed by Monday, and the busiest time was 10:00 to 11:00, followed by 12:00. For EMS, quarter, average response time, 1.27 minutes. Uh, this, as the move says, our bigger move is on there, this does include the second and third run calls. We're going to have one career staff, career-up here, volunteers have to partially staff the second and fully staff the third run calls, but we still have a 1.27 minute average response time from our end, as they're responding. And for the fiscal year, 1.13 average fiscal year. EMS revenue, no highlights, standard transaction layer. Revenue, expenses, we did have a lot of shift coverage, uh, in our last quarter. Here, we had a lot of staff. We had a lot of tenured staff, uh, to plead throughout that period, summer against air spraying, so we had to cover those shifts. And we did have personnel on extended leave, uh, in our medical supply costs increased during that quarter. The, for the year, revenue highlights, we discussed that earlier, quarterly report, we did have higher donation revenues, $7,000, but, uh, for the quarter, or for the fiscal year, about, uh, the lower invoices were $8,000, so that, uh, is pretty close. And then we just had our funding FY '20, changing funding from town. The expense for the fiscal year, payroll, as I just mentioned, that last quarter, we had a lot, lot of shift covers, you know, with somebody on extended leave, in time of $20,000. Uh, expense to cover those shifts, you know, our medical supply costs, $5,000. And we had a computer failure, that was in the first quarter of the year, for 2,500 computers. Uh, we were able to cover several discounts, uh, for other things, fuel and stuff, and whatever. Uh, EMS capital funds summary, we, you know, we're going to work together to find these capital funds for the ambulance replacements. And right now we're using the whole county funds. Of course, the third grade funds, uh, is per ambulance, and we use that to pay our loan payment, uh, for that. And we are, we're desperately researching funds for the cardiac monitors that are in their life. That's between $2,500 and $100,000 for replacement. You know, as we mentioned before, we don't have any, the EMS account doesn't have contingency funds, uh, for emergencies, so we depend on, uh, the bank loan or something. We have to, our emergency EMS, something happened, we have to, uh, fight to the bank loan. I know government funds or something will help us out.
So for the cardiac monitors, um, is it possible to use any COVID grant relief that you received?
So, uh, I was going to mention that as we concluded, uh, we are looking, I was on the phone last week, uh, with Mr. Weston Young, so we are looking at the American Recovery Funds. Uh, we know the county got some, and the town got some funds, so we're looking to see if those by chance qualify and we write letters to both agencies, the county and the town, uh, if that's an applicable, uh, expense. You know, we're getting, if the town will be getting a letter, and the county will be getting a letter, asking, asking for some of those funds.
And then, um.
So we had to investigate that as recently as last week.
Okay, awesome. And why didn't you cut you off if you finished with that? Okay. And then, uh, just a clarification question for you. When there's an ambulance call, an EMS call, is it, do any, does anything else leave the station other than the ambulance?
Uh, not unless it's a call that needs help, like if the ambulance crew gets there, maybe the person is, uh, in the bathroom, stuck beside a toilet, they're obese, uh, it's a cardiac arrest and take CPR. So yes, then the fire sirens activated, the fire company needs to respond with as many volunteers as can to help with that. If there's only two, two people in the ambulance.
Thank you.
Everyone?
Dave, aside from that highlight you provided, um, I noticed there's no financial report with this, uh, presentation. Is there any particular reasoning?
Uh, well, this is, this is the last quarterly report for the old contract, so with the new contract in September will be, uh, this, this is the existing contract for the old, so we're preparing those, uh, and they'll be in September for the first quarter.
Isn't that being the old contract here?
Yeah, that's in the old contract. Okay, thank you. We'll put the current issue in the contract.
And may I suggest, uh, going forward, um, you, you have spoke, and what you have presented is general, and you have said some things that, 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 that I wonder about. You talked about the price of gas. Um, if, if gas has, has increased, I would like to see actuals as relates to what you have actually spent for gas as compared to same time last year. That will give us, that will give us some idea of what is needed going forward. You talked about overtime, and, and you had a figure of $20,000. I would like to see specifically what has been spent for overtime, when, and how much, and the related benefits associated with that number. You talked about, um, the server break and that cost. I would like to see the actual expenditure and what was paid and who was paid. So, so going forward, if you could be more specific and provide that specific information, that will give us more information as it relates to equitable funding from the town. But, but we just need to be as specific as possible when it comes to allocating taxpayer money. And, and we will be able to say, the fire department needs an increase related to overtime salaries because this is what was spent in the first and second quarter, and this is their, their projection. Or the fire department is going to need more funding for just fuels because this is what was spent, and, and this is the projection going forward. If we could get those numbers compared to same time, like, for the preceding year, that would put us, when I say us, I'm talking about the mayor council, in a better position to actually gauge the appropriateness of our funding for the fire department and EMS.
Does anyone have any questions? Any more questions?
Thank you. Uh, thanks for adjusting your schedule for us.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I think now we're on item number five. Annual Parks Program, Deputy Mayor.
This is the same information that was presented two weeks ago. There are no changes.
Does anyone have, have any questions?
Refresh my memories, two weeks ago, we were talking about the lights. I remember that part. And I know nothing has changed, right?
Right.
But let's, can we, can we recap? I only say that because I know somebody out there saying they don't remember last two weeks. It's not me, it's them.
Well, I mean, the, the information that's in your packet is exactly the documents that were provided last time. Um, so to recap, the Parks Commission's suggested priority list for development projects is the charge of the basketball court lighting project. Then the, uh, excuse me, I have to shift around here. The, um, Burbage Park, Ping Pong Park, and that is working with We Heart Berlin, as Mr. Ween mentioned, um, earlier. The Parks Commission also discussed, uh, doing a skate park study for the purpose of having, uh, professionals come in and actually assess various locations and, uh, make recommendations on what those locations would, might be and, and what kind of park would work. And, you know, there are a variety of different forms that skate parks can take. Uh, if you look at Ocean Pines, has sunken in the ground, uh, obstacles, I guess you'd call them, or more as Ocean City, they're all above ground. So we need that sort of thing. Some people look at that and make that kind of determination. And then, uh, the last thing was rather a, a last-minute addition of an inclusive playground. And something that, this, this project list has been a living document for years and years. So the inclusive playground is a fairly new concept. Its placement on the list has nothing to do with the fact that there have been other projects that have been, um, in, in the works to try to get accomplished already in Omaha.
So since this is, I just, to recap, uh, since this is a living document, I noticed there's no, because we don't know, prices for the Ping Pong Park, the study, or any components of the playground?
With the timing that we had to get this for the council at the last meeting, there simply wasn't enough time to pull those numbers together. So rather give you numbers that we actually had absolutely no idea whether they were legitimate or not, we just let that go. They would be in, in the future anyway.
Right.
So it's not something that we're looking to, uh, start embracing.
And it's a wish list, so.
Yes, exactly.
Do you, um, this is a motion. Well, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Annual Parks Program for Development for FY '23, motion 2021-14. I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded that the Annual Parks Program Development be approved. Are there any other questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. United.
Thank you.
The, the, the next two items, six and seven, discussion of our planning timeline and this discussion and review of goals and objectives for the community to center. I, I think. I think it will be altogether fitting and appropriate that we take with these two items. Due to the mayor not being able to, to attend this meeting, I, I think these discussions really should include his, his participation. So, so we're just going to take with these two items. With that, reporter of the town administrator.
The, the things that I wish to report on, just so we weren't aware, Tim and Jamie are not here this evening. But with the electric utility, since June 1 of '21, we have generated five times and ten over peats. So that's a good thing. The new generator is, is doing what we had expected, so a really good thing. Within the water arena, the 376 113 project, the work has started. I think you've seen where the, we've done road closures now, beginning at 10:00 PM until 5:00 AM. Any issues?
Yeah, but that was one of my topics. I was going to go ahead and state that we have to go ahead and make sure everyone's aware of the detours and that they will be working throughout the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, you know, it won't be that long. But they definitely have closed the whole loo down and they were working last night. So the weather committee should be out there again.
Vice President Burrell should be the one that actually knows when the roads close, as the detour, I believe, comes around. So you'll see injuries in the ground there.
Is that 10 o'clock?
10 to 5. And I know that from the, from the electric side for a second, the toll and tolls have all been moved minus one. We're waiting on Horizon to take that move on the law. So let's just open it. Tim and I are meeting tomorrow Tuesday with Albin Cat, Carter Cat. The solar project at Schoolfield Street is complete. So we have some final questions for Carter Cat. He starts the grant and receiving those grant monies. We have met all the requirements for the state. The inspection passed, all documentation that has been received. So we should have those monies within a four to six month period, which will pay that, plus Carter Cat paid for, for us in advance. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff?
The solar array is fully operational.
Yes. And I wish Tim were here. He could give you a more scientific, but it's, it's doing what it's supposed to do. There's the lab. But it's doing what it's supposed to do. And I would encourage you to go down to Schoolfield and take a look at it. I mean, it's, it's a very basic system, but you can, you can get an idea for what's generated, what's happening with it. It's pretty easy. It really is. And I think, I hand it down to the thing that I find the most fascinating when it, when it's generating when the sun's out. But if you stand there and you watch the outside, you can watch, you know, the numbers drop rapidly because if a cloud passes over, I mean, that's, that energy's gone because it's not stored. But it's, it's pretty fascinating to observe.
I think Tim said last meeting that it's generating like 50% of the needed power.
Correct.
For that facility.
For that, for that facility.
So I have a question about this peak shaving phone call slash text. Is there a method, a rhythm as to the time that it's sent out?
We typically try to send it out if we have advanced notice around 6:00 in the evening prior. However, if we don't have that advanced notice, we just send it out as soon as we can.
Yeah, it comes from, yeah.
Coach, DJ, yeah, yeah. So if you meet Tim, Booth and Associates, watch. So, you know, Tim can sit here today sometimes and say, they're likely to be generating more as high, they're not guaranteed. So sometimes it's the last minute we'll get hold. And sometimes you, they can project.
I was curious about that because I questioned, and I know that a couple of people that I come across on a daily basis were like, well, by the time I get this phone call, I'm already at work.
Right. And that is unfortunate, but for those who can do something about it, then there it is. But yeah, typically we try to send them out the evening before.
It works the other way too. Sometimes we send it the evening before and then the next day they'll say, cancel peak shaving. But we don't, you know, it's just, you never know until the last minute.
Of course, even if they do cancel peak shaving, it still doesn't hurt to turn those lights off.
It still doesn't hurt to, to conserve. And the timing is actually dictated by the market at that time.
Right.
And, and we just want to save as much as possible.
I mean, you guys are a wealth of notoriety now because of, like I said, I'm not the only one, but people do say, oh, I am at work at 9:37. This morning, I think it might have been 10:00. And that immediately came to me, was like, this.
When we first started doing this and that kind of thing occurred, where we found out the morning of, we debated whether we even bothered to send it. But what we figured was for those who can do it, it's self benefit.
Yes, it is. Departmental reports, we're going to start with Ivy.
Good evening. Just a couple of things tonight. The In Berlin ribbon cutting is going to be Thursday at 5:30. And for those who don't know where the In Berlin is, it is located behind the library. And then also this week is national, beginning on Sunday, August 1st, begins National Farmer's Market Week. And a lot of the farmers and vendors at the farmer's market will be giving us their very super favorite secret recipes that we're going to pass out on Sunday. That's all I have tonight.
Questions?
Ivy, in the letter we received from Joe Matresik, the county, it says there's a 4,500 tourism grant you received. What is that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We received a letter from the county stating we were granted a 4,500 tourism grant.
Oh, that is, that is, it's, it's actually given to Worcester County Department of Tourism and then they spend it on our behalf. So that money goes towards the commercials that you see on the V D O C and some other sponsorships that they do on Berlin's behalf. We don't, we don't see that, that funding. They spend it for, for us.
Do we call that bypass funding?
Pass through.
There you go. I knew what those things.
There's a lot. If you look at some of the Ocean City visitor guides, they have articles about Berlin in there that the county pays for on our behalf. And they just let you know that.
Questions, Rob?
There's, there's no check. No check.
Dave?
I have nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for, for Dave?
Chief? Good evening. We just have an increase of traffic throughout town with the detours and the construction. 376 is definitely getting a lot of action. We actually have expressed to staff that we've actually seen some deteriorating right there at Steve Nekater coming in, going to Dollar General. So that's something that we're going to have to go ahead and watch when all this work is done. But again, we're talking about the pedestrian traffic downtown. We're talking about traffic at the hospital. It's just been real busy season. That's all I have to report.
You didn't hype your program that's coming next week?
National Night Out was hyped last week. We are...
Do it again.
But again, we've actually have a lot of interest and we're talking about a lot of the new first time participants. Face base has, you know, been there as always, but we've actually added a couple of churches that want to be involved. Buckingham is definitely looking to do some big things. So we're very, very happy and we think that the community's ready to come out. So hopefully, everyone comes out and enjoys themselves, even just for a short period of time, if nothing less. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Natalie?
We're still reviewing the fiscal '21 expenses and revenue. I have emailed you today preliminary draft kind of reports and put a little short summary of where we stand in. Just want to remind again, those are just preliminary numbers. We're still waiting on some outstanding revenues to be received. And so many vendors kind of behind invoicing us for services that they provided. So will be additional expenses posted. Hopefully not so much. It's not many. Purchasers outstanding, but we still have some. You will see in the numbers, there is no expense for retirement. There is a journal entry for accrued retirement, so that will change a little bit of reporting. Later on, I'm planning to bring a fiscal '21 overview to Mayor Council as a short presentation as we normally do. I think maybe in two minutes or so. September 13th, week scheduled as preliminary PKS and company audit. They will be here on site with us, which is good, go like that. Jean Howie has submitted her review and reports. Jeff and I will be reviewing them this week and we will schedule a day when she will come and present a short summary for five things. That's all I have.
And I like to just give a, and tell me where I'm wrong, but I call it the good news on the preliminary numbers. The good news on the preliminary is revenues came in about 15% more than what we had budgeted, so about $800,000 and some thousand dollars. That's a good thing. And then the other good thing is no department overexpensed in FY '21.
That's great. That's great. Thank you, Bernard.
Well, we don't know about public work yet because Jim, I asked Jim, how long have you been here? No, he's, he's doing well.
No questions for Natalie? If not, we'll go to Jimmy.
Good evening, council. Good news today, Maryland Industrial Truck Incorporated, which is where we purchased our sweeper, contacted Jeff and I today. And he informed us that it is in Baltimore and we set up a date this Thursday to receive our new sweeper. So potential delivery this week.
You have a new driver?
We got a driver.
Do you have CDOS?
Don't need one.
Don't need one?
No.
She wants a driver. Don't park your car on the street. Look out, everybody.
We also have, we also purchased 20 30 gallon blue recycled containers from the county. And they're downstairs in the town hall, which can be purchased at $5 each. And there's the key. And it'll help with our recycling. And we want you to encourage people to come, purchase them and use them. And it'll help our operators separate the recycling and make quicker pickup for our drivers and stuff.
And I'd like to add to that, Jimmy, please tell me I'm not wrong with this. My observation since we pulled the two open top dumpsters down at the rain property, Aaron Park. The good news is there's not been any mass exodus, if you will, of folks throwing stuff in the ground. So to the public, thank you very much. We still have the one clothes dumpster down there that is for cordyne cardboard. And we're doing our best to stay on top of that. Jimmy's work with the county, because it is a, the county actually picks it up for us and takes it to the landfill. So we're, we're trying to feel it out to get a schedule as to, you know, when to end it, how many times, so that we can stay on top of that as well. But thank you to the public for not doing the bad stuff, if you will.
And my last item is I just want to remind all residents, when you're putting your trash to the curb each week on your scheduled days, make sure that the can is to the curb with the lid facing the street. That way, when the truck, automated truck comes by, they will just pick it up and dump it right into the bed. And that'll help save the lids. If the can is turned sideways or backwards, that's when the lids could get damaged. So. And the one other point is, sometimes people will put them right up against their car or near a basketball pole or a tree. But it needs to be about three to four feet from any objects because when the automated truck comes out with fingers, it closes, lifts it up, and then brings it back. If you're clear, if it's near a car or something, then we don't want to, we could potentially hit a car or something like that. So just keep your trash cans to the street and free of any obstacles.
Paint an arrow on the top of the lid, pointing, curb this way with an arrow.
When you said lid facing the street.
So that means, that's the street, the lid opens that way.
That means my wheels should not be closest to the street.
Correct.
Okay.
There's going to be a nice little graphic in the next Berlin.
I got it. That's a nice one.
Does anyone have any questions for Jimmy?
Jimmy, what is the schedule for the sweeper in town? How does that work? What, is there a schedule?
We will designate days that we will start. We'll also look at maybe designating certain days or certain areas once we get the sweeper and we're able to establish a routine with our operators at, in the department.
You're not sweeping now, are you?
No, our, our other sweeper finally, it ended.
Yes, that's what I thought.
It's for sale.
It's for sale. But we will do more weekly sweeping of all the streets.
Questions for Jim? Mary?
As Arnold mentioned, the National Night Out is next week. The Parks Commission will be there with a free craft for the kid, the only thing for the kids, children. The only thing that we're asking in return is thoughts and prayers for cool weather. Because it's typically pretty hot out there. And also just a reminder that Eastbound Disc Golf will be starting their special activities with the temporary goals. They will have their first event this Sunday, August 1st, from 9:30 to 1:00. If anyone wants to go out just to get a sense of how it works and what it looks like, that will be the first of the three events that they were approved at the last.
For clarification purposes, did we restrict them from the pond area?
I don't think we did.
I don't believe so. I don't think that there were any restrictions placed because this was for the, for the purpose of taking a look at how it, how it all works.
In the minutes, it does say, once the, I believe, Councilmember Oris and Councilmember Nichols said, once the course is established, we would strongly encourage not be near the ponds. So it, I think it was kind of once it's all set up and you guys had a chance to look at it. I think that's what that was.
The only restriction that I recollect is that there's no permit structure.
Yeah.
Right.
Strictly temporary.
Yes, at this point, it's all temporary. They have submitted their paperwork and paid the reservation fees for the three dates.
However...
There's still some pending pieces though, right?
Still some pending pieces.
Have they submitted the probable non-protestant?
No.
Or the insurance?
Or the insurance.
So...
They will be, they, they will actually, contacted me today. They're going to be out in the park this evening. They're probably already done. And they will be reaching out to Jeff tomorrow, since I am not in the office tomorrow. And he will be addressing those items with that.
So tell me, is the insurance prerequisite for having these during temporary events?
Yes, that was one of the conditions that was set.
And the first event is scheduled this Sunday? This Sunday? And so when will the insurance certification be delivered?
I'm going to give them till Friday.
Okay. And if it's not delivered by Friday, and what happens?
You won't tell them they won't be able to hold their hands on that?
They have to cease the activity on Sunday.
What time of day? Because I, I missed it last week. What time of day, Sunday, would this event be held?
They've reserved the park from 9:30 to 1:00. I don't think that they will probably take that entire time. But they have to kind of do some setup and take it down. So, but within that timeframe.
And this is for the next three Sundays?
No, it is for this Sunday, August 1st, then August 10th, which I believe is a Tuesday actually, in the evening, and then August 22nd.
Carter is, is that complete?
Yes.
Are there questions for Mary?
Can you put those dates in the bulletin and put it out this month? Just so that we know when it's going to be there?
Yeah, well, we don't typically promote events like that, but we'll, we'll figure out something. Yeah. out something, yeah.
And also, in the bulletin, can you put some kind of a reminder to people when they're mowing their lawns, that they don't need to move them into the butters?
We, we run that kind of information, I think we ran it this spring.
We usually do it every spring.
Well, I think they'd abuse it again, because on my street, it floods, the same people that have the flooding are cleaning grass in there.
Yeah, unfortunately, if people don't, don't read the words, they don't get the message.
And what they, what they did say, I'm talking about Eastbound Golf, they said that on the 1st of August, the start time is at 10:00 AM, and they're projecting 25 persons. On the 10th, 6:00 PM start, start time, 30 people are projected, and then on the 22nd, it's an all-day, 72-person capacity.
So, that's a Jim, but it's all day?
Yes.
From what, to what?
He doesn't give a ton.
They reserve the park from 9:30 to 1:00. For that day.
Okay. Are there more questions for Mary? If not, we will hear from Council.
Actually, don't have anything to report.
Do we have comments from the Council?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, actually, I don't think I have any. No, no.
They always do these things to me. I always have things to say and they have nothing to say, so it seems like I'm the topic of one, but that's okay, I'll go with that. So, let me start my list. First of all, Darrell, you were on my, in my, you were the topic of conversation last Friday, as I did my first day of work as a town employee, like physically, like doing physical labor. So, last Friday, I spent the day, where did I work? Water, water, wastewater. Yep, water resources, so I did all those little areas, wastewater management, storm water, what were the other parts? In the sewer, because I was in the sewer. I went down, literally, in the sewer, and I wasn't scared, these guys thought I would be, but I wasn't. And when I was down there, I was like, this is exactly what Darrell was talking about. Being in that Broad Street thing, my God. Listen, if you haven't been in there, go down, because, and I say this to you, and I'm not, I'm not even saying this to be funny, I'm being very serious when I say this. In order for you to truly understand where change needs to happen, you need to get down in that hole, put those orange gloves, and literally shovel those things that are happening down there, and I can't say it because you don't leak me out, but that is ridiculous, that we are still dealing with that. Darrell, I said your name dinner like three times when I was in the house, so it is time to make some changes on Broad Street. That's my first comment. Secondly, I appreciate the water plant for not only allowing me to be there, but not treating me like I was somebody special, because I am an everyday citizen, just like the rest of us, and they allowed me to be there and see how this works firsthand, and to play a part in every phase of this, so I truly have a better understanding of how that whole process works. And I wish, as citizens, I'm not telling you guys to open the floodgates and start showing up to work, but really and truly, you should, as, as a community, we need to take a vested interest, take some time, go down there and see exactly what happens from the flush to the pushback out into community, because it's, it's, this is...
Maybe a field trip day.
Well, and I will say that any of our departments, if, if someone reaches out to them and wants to get a better sense, obviously within reasonableness, but they would be happy to accommodate it.
But I think as the everyday citizen, especially those who, and I'm, I'm not saying that anybody's any different, but those of you who move here, new to the town, you need a true understanding of the ins and outs and the runnings of your town. So, get out there and learn, not just water, but all of the other departments, because there's, there's a whole lot more to it than what you tend to see in these meetings, what you tend to see on Main Street, what you tend to hear in social media. Don't feed into the hype. Get out there, roll your sleeves up, and see it firsthand. Kudos to you guys, because it was hot as the dickens on Friday, and it was not even a really bad weather day, so I can't imagine what my next day out reading meters is going to be like. I'm excited, yes.
I did that with the other department, it was pretty interesting.
Make sure you have your name tag on.
My who? No, you have to wear a shirt, don't you, that says...
And your name tag, we don't want you to just go on people's property.
That's never happened, right Arnold?
Well, I'm, I'm, I will, I guess that's the next part. When we do this, I will have to ask if I can borrow a shirt, that's it.
So, you really will be on the sweeper then?
I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't joking, if you don't have to have a CDL, I will, I am not joking, I want to try it. Not on the street where there's cars, but I do, and I'm not even, this is a common belief, this is real. I want, I want to, I, I think, for those of us sitting here, it's a true, if, if, our job goes a lot further than just sitting here and making decisions, I believe, and I believe getting out into the workforce and seeing how the town is truly operated, not only just within the departments, but in the commissions and whatnot, because you guys honestly make the decisions, you do the grunt for this town. We just, I, nay, whatever, and read, but to get out and to actually see what, how it's done, needs to happen. That's me, I'm getting off the soapbox. And my next comment was, the ribbon cuttings, I love that you keep us abreast, the community of how, what they are, where they are. This last one, last week's Unabella, the grand reopening, that was, that was phenomenal, just to see, the facility before was beautiful, but to see the transformation and to see how, how much that meant to the, the store owners, it's, that's good stuff, and to see the, the town businesses come together for each other, that's what this town is about.
And the backstory to that, for, for those who don't know, Cassandra Brown started as a volunteer at the Buckham Center, and then she got a part-time job at Unabella Salute, loved it so much, the owners, they wanted to sell, so she bought the business, had it in, in that, that, that small building, the building was, is falling apart, connected her with the owners of the Art in the Fields building, and, you know, you want to talk about, I, I, I love her story, and she loves her story, and I can't talk about her enough.
Well, if you have, and I'm not, this isn't a commercial, this is a Shanika-ism, if you've not visited Unabella and heard her story and seen the passion from that business owner, take a moment, stop in there, if nothing else, just to say, hey, congratulations, because it is, it's big, and I guess I hop back on that soapbox. To me, that's what Berlin is, you know, and that, I'm done, I won't go there, because that's a whole nother conversation, but kudos to the town of Berlin.
How do you follow that?
There's nobody left, that's what I'm saying!
Okay, we can follow that with, with comments from the public.
I just want to say, none of you use your microphones very well, again, and it makes it really hard for those in the back, that's why I moved up front. You don't pull it up close enough, and some of you talk softly and away from the mic, I mean, Shanika, you're away from yours mostly.
So, I, I mean, I didn't...
You did the best of every one.
So, this is kind of, I, I told you, I said, I couldn't hear myself in the video last time, so...
Yes, and that's it, I mean, I don't know, I texted my daughter to see if she could hear from, I mean, I'd rather be at home, because I can hear better there, and that's a bad thing, I mean, I'd rather be here where I can see it, but...
I wasn't aware of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Michael Wiley, Chairman, Berlin Parks Commission, I'd just like the public to know that it's nice to stop us and tell us on the street, your views on the parks, what's needed, not needed, but we're asking people to please come to our Parks Commission meetings, they're open once a month, they're advertised, and also to come to this meeting, and that to, not only you know, but what they want, what they're interested in. We had very little attendance from the public at our parks meeting, the Hill right here, on the, once a month, and we welcome people to come and make it, so it's on the record and it's official. It's fine to stop me on the street and tell me, but we want to see it in writing, so that it's, it's there.
Thank you.
Mikey's, sorry, is it every month or every other month?
Every, I'm sorry, yeah, every other month right now, I mean, after COVID, we've been, right now, we're still alternating, so the next one, Mary, will be...
Well, we'll be at National Night Out, of course, and certainly talk to the Commission at that, that gathering, but the next one will be the first Tuesday of September, I'm blank on what day.
Right, yeah, you can, online, it's, you can see the exact...
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Comments from the press?
Do you have somebody else to do?
Hi, my name's Mary Enlaski, and I live on Westminster Drive, and we have a real problem with flooding down there, and that behind properties between, depending on which platte or who you listen to, it's either six or eight, Jack, Jeff, Jamie, thank you, guys so much for coming out. But anyway, behind the houses, there is a quieted swale, it's not any easement, it goes with houses attached to it. And I moved in in December of 2017, and I've sent numerous emails, had numerous meetings, I've talked to everybody in the state of Maryland, anything you guys want to know about this, ask, I, I think, I... The town of Berlin says that they don't have any responsibility for this, up until, I believe it was this past late fall, early January, when Jeff wanted to talk to the town attorney and said, yes, this is part of the town of Berlin's jurisdiction. Prior to that, it was being said it was part of Worcester County. Worcester County is very clear, adamant, I'm in constant contact with these guys who adamantly say, all they have done for the town of Berlin is like compliance or performance, like what follows within the guidelines from the Maryland Department of the Environment and Soil and Conservation, you know, and everybody along those lines. There are some real problems said, this, this has not been, this was originally done, signed off on, on October 5th, 1992, and there's been no maintenance done to it, the owners of the properties have done nothing, the town of Berlin has done nothing. That from what my neighbors have said, and that's why I'm here tonight, from what my neighbors have said, there are at least two, possibly up to four sheds, that the town of Berlin gave permits to to put on this swale, which definitely needs water, but it screws it up big time. With all that being said, everybody and their brother that I've talked to, I sent a letter after our last meeting, because it's, apparently it's common knowledge for everybody, but nobody will find out what's going on. When Worcester Prep did their fields, when they leveled out and fixed them all up and that kind of thing, there's drainage ditches and deep swales and everything on the other side that feed into the drainage pond that's on Westminster that was built originally just for Buckingham, for Buckingham's state. Now, apparently, this water is coming from those fields, that when they were doing it, they covered up some of the drainage ditches, and now it's, now it's a mess. This, I've got pictures, I'll be, you may have to share what I've got here, sorry, where the water literally shoots straight up, it looks like a fountain. The water, it'll, it'll sit there, the water's supposed to drain down from Abbey and go into this, into this drainage pond, the water that's supposed to flow from the six to eight houses on Westminster, that water doesn't even make it into the ditch, it goes underneath to go into the pond, it's totally blocked. And I actually took some work pictures this morning, and this is something that I dealt with Jeff on, you've been great, even though I'm mad at you, but, it's like, you know, the people, they put cinder blocks, it's, there's rose bushes, there's, you name it, there's everything in the world in this swale. And since the beginning of this, I've dealt with three different contractors, who now, who try to come up with different ideas, Jeff has come up with some ideas, I can't fix this alone, it can't be just me, because of everything else, there's multiple issues down and out of this, and honestly, I'm, I'm just, I'm losing my yard. After spending thousands of dollars, I do actually have grass growing back there now, but the erosion, I had a contractor come back out, who had been in, I guess it was last year, he came back out in March, and he was shocked at the amount that I've lost in my yard. So, if there's any way, what I, what I had asked for was the copies of plaques, the stormwater management plans, anything that had anything to do with any of the drains in that area, and I filled out the form that I was asked to do, and Jeff came back and told me it would be anywhere between $448 to $1,000, that it would be 10 to 20 hours worth of work to do this. I'm willing to go do the work, I'm willing to go pull these, I've got tons of stuff that I've already pulled, that I've got, I've got a stormwater management plan, where it says that private, private swales and ditches, where there's supposed to be a private water contract between the homeowner and the town of Berlin, and I moved in, there was none, no, and none of my neighbors ever seen one of these things. But it's just, I don't want to sit here and I don't want to blame people, and I don't want to say it's your fault, it's your fault, it's like, we need to get passes and say, okay, everybody's messed this up, how can we fix it? And the only thing I keep doing is going around in circles, and I don't mind pulling all this paperwork, I don't mind sitting down, I don't mind showing you what I've got here, and just everything that I've learned, I worked in a manual machine shop for 33 years, and worked on pumps, motors, years, any sort of rotating equipment, so I do kind, I'm not an expert, but I do have an understanding of some of this stuff. But we just need, something needs to be done, it's just, it's that one little pond there that catches the water from, it comes down from, part that comes to, I guess comes off the west from Abbey, and then it all goes into this pond, there, there's no, there's not, there's not enough room just for that. Our water's not even making it on half of Westminster Street, and then we got everything dumped in from the fields on, from Worcester Prep, and nobody wants to talk about it, you know, like this is, you know, it's got to be discussed, this is something that's a real problem, but from everything I've learned, it is the town of Berlin's jurisdiction, it is not, Worcester County does not give out permits, does not maintain, does not go, you know, they give the guidelines and the guidance, but they don't do the actual work on it. I was told through the Maryland Department of the Environment, a lot of times what happens in these cases, is that when you have, like in these towns, they say 99% of what they deal with in the state of Maryland, the towns, they need, they overtake it. They said in very rare cases, or areas which you get outside of the town limits, there's homeowners associations and people like that would take charge of it. In this case, nobody's done any of it, and I, I just, I'm just really like, I've been doing this for four years, and I'm, I'd like some help.
If I could ask you, the contractors you talk to, what solutions did they come up with?
Okay, what, originally, the original contractor I dealt with, we originally thought this was just like in my, like my, just in my yard, you know, the way my yard was or whatever. And they came up with, and, and I dealt with Jane Ryder, who came back and said, no, 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 this is the whole thing, this is when this whole thing kind of started coming clearly, but she came back and said, we're going to give you a plan. The first plan that they came back with, the EA engineer took a look at it and said, oh, this is gonna, it's not going to make it go away, but it will definitely help it tremendously. So, what I did was, the first 1,500 I spent across the pond through the town of Berlin, was to put a drain in with a corrugated pipe that runs out, so like you're kind of, you know, like almost like a French drain. Yeah, so, so, and that, and honestly, that made it 10 times worse, that made it so much worse, because now, all this water, and, and plus we're dealing with, we got solid clay, there's not a lot of dirt or water that runs down. The second idea was, a contractor came in and something that Jeff had mentioned, where you talk about throwing holes and running holes and that kind of stuff, and, you know, because of the amount of clay, I think two and a half feet was mentioned, this guy was saying four feet, he's covered that holes every 18 inches, but then they started looking and they said, well, the amount, I've got thousands of gallons of water, I'm not talking like a pond or something, you know, so dirt, I'm talking, and this is no exaggeration. So, so what they tried to do the second time, is they came out and said, well, he goes, I'm not going to take your money, he goes, this is a waste of time, I don't want to take your money. So, he did an abbreviated form of, he said, let's, let's just try for $1,000 to build a berm up, like around the outside of the back part of our property, to try to stop it from coming in from the properties on West Street. There was a property in Ford Street, West Street, that they wanted four dump truckloads full of dirt in December of 2018, to quote Phil and the Bloods. in the summer of 2018, to quote Philander Platts. Laura Allen said, well, they don't need permits for that, it's fine. And they did that, they took, that was a whole nother pain that went into this, and I don't blame them for doing it, I, I, I get why they did it. But, but it's, so that, that was the second thing, um, as he said, drilling of the holes. The only thing that, I mean, there, there's nothing that I can, you know, they talked about putting in, like rocks and putting in a sump pump and run a pipe, you know, push the water out, except that the back part of my yard is too low. The contractor was afraid that if we did that, that the pipes would freeze up, like if there wasn't some sort of heating, you know, to keep, you know, keep it from freezing in the winter time. Um, what else did they look at? There, I mean, they tried, they looked at just running the pipes out that a lot of people down on West, and even on Westminster have done, where they just run the water into, you know, the drains on the street. And it's just, there's so much water, it would have to be, I mean, probably the smallest is six to an eight inch pipe to do that. And that would be flooding everything in between. Now, one of the contractors who has been kind of dealing with me all along, he said, look, he goes, you can become a jerk. The town of Berlin has allowed other people to put rose bushes, up thither, there's sheds, buildings, everything in the world on this thing, to basically bulkhead my lot and to fill it in. And I know Dave, Dave had told me, he was sending my backyard one day, saying, you can't do that, you know? Um, which I wouldn't do. I, you know, I started trying to do this, not to make this worse for my neighbors, but nothing's getting done. And, and it's, and it really is, I mean, I have to pay for mosquito treatments because the bugs out there are so bad, my grandkids couldn't even go out back. So i- if there's, you know, as we said, if anybody's got some great ideas or wants to meet, I don't want to just keep talking and not getting anything done. But as he said, I got a bunch of information here, I got pictures I can show you what I'm talking about.
Is the majority of the water in your lot, or is it spread out across all the neighbors?
Uh, no, it is, from what I can tell, okay, if it goes from one to six, I can tell you, um, I'm three, four and five, they get some, but nothing like what I get. Now, two, who's, like, if you're looking at my house to the right, going up towards Abbey, they, they catch it bad. And the, the guy on the end, he won't, he just, he won't, that whole thing is so filled in, around the drain, there's bushes coming out of it, the thing that flows underneath, there's nothing that's going to there. And, but yeah, but I get a lot of water, the people to the next, the next to me, number two, they get a lot of water. Some of, from what I understand, and I have not seen this personally, but neighbors talking, that the people who were down at the end of this, you know, they filled it, they built it up, they filled it in. So now the water's got nowhere to go, they don't have water in their yard, but it's got to go somewhere. And, and as he said, I'm not in this to sit down and blame him and say, listen, I did, but, you know, I, it's just, it's gotten well past that. It's just something that really needs to be addressed.
What should I address?
I am three, Westminster Drive. And anytime, anybody, I've told Jeff, I told Jeff, if you guys are by, you want to go by and take a look, right now it looks pretty good, there's grass back there and it's dry, you know, um, but, you know, anytime you'd like to go by, there's a fence, there's gates, there's no dog, please feel free, just absolutely go back there and take a look, and take a look at what's going on at that pond, and then back behind there, all those ruts are that feed into that from, from Worcester Prep. Um, if you can get into some of my, you know, the neighbor's yard, see what they've done, it's just, as I said, I'm kind of lost here.
Yeah, Mary, I just, I want to thank you for, for coming in here tonight and explaining this to everyone. You know, when, when we were out there together, we went out there to the back and we did, um, all that area there from, and it was a learning experience for me as well. And I have spoken to Jeff and reached out to Darrell, um, throughout this whole process, just to kind of see about that pond, um, and to see where we are. So it's, it, it may not appear, but at least on my, from how I'm looking at it, we're working on some, well, we're working on what could possibly be done, if anything.
I appreciate it.
So we, we are, um, looking into it, it just, it's, it's, it is a problem.
Well, and as I said, I'd be more than happy to take those, and I'm not an expert or anything, but, you know, as I said, I'll share what, what I've been given so far, but show you where the line's on, where this water's supposed to be flowing and going and that kind of stuff.
Do you actually, I don't mean to cut you off, are these additional pictures than what you've given me?
Um, some of them are different than the ones I gave you, some of them are the same. But I actually took pictures this morning, of like, the drainage that's sitting on Abbey, I mean, you said all kinds of stuff wrong there.
Would you mind emailing those to me?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Why don't you knock out one right here?
Oh, well, then I'll talk to you after.
Okay.
Would you mind a second?
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, I'll get them out to the council.
Okay, I'll give you, I'll give them to you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marie?
Westminster feeds into Abbey, which feeds into West Street. So West Street should be number one priority, not wherever it is on the list of streets. That is where all of this water comes from, I'm very familiar with what she's talking about. And they have water after West Street is cleared, and I didn't realize that until one rain, I went walking with my boots on, and they have water up to my knees, on their property out that way. And it comes from Worcester Country School, it comes from the athletic fields, across and into the ditch, over to the country school, all of that water comes to West Street, and that's why we have a problem. And then it meets down at the bottom of West Street, in that big ditch that you guys have worked on, because it comes from Franklin, and from Henry Mill, and all of that comes to that other ditch, and goes down into West Street. So West Street needs work.
I mean, you guys seem like you're getting, I, I'm not being, this is not being facetious, but it sounds like, you said it's coming from the ball fields too?
Yes.
You, you follow the water. I've done it, believe me, over the years, longer than she has.
If you go out there during a heavy rainy, which I've got, that I have, and you can sit there and you can watch it on, like, if you, if you, if you're coming down, you go straight on Abbey, and you'll look straight at that pond, walk right on the other side of that pond, you can just watch that water coming off those fields, going into this, probably the, what is it, six, six foot ravine back behind those houses, that totally fills up with water, that comes up, that floods the pond, you know, that floods the pond, that floods the backyards of those houses that are on that side. And this water just comes shooting up, goes down, like she was saying, goes down Abbey, hits West Street, comes down Westminster. I mean, and, and, and as he said, the water from Westminster, that this, this drainage pond is actually built for, doesn't even, it's, it's not even included in this, it doesn't even make it to that drainage pond. It's, it's all, it's all city, it's all, it's blocked.
So Worcester Prep has no standing water either? Their water washes, sweeps off of them as well, you say, and comes along with the ball fields?
See, I, I-
I'm trying to see this in my head.
The ditches along the road, if you look at the ditches along both sides of the road, you'll see them all coming towards West Street. And they cut across, there's a, a drain pipe that cuts under the road, um, about the end of those tree line that the, the school has there.
Right, right.
And, and that feeds it over to that pond that the school has, which feeds into all that other stuff.
And, and what I don't understand is that when you look at the original, like, like the original plans for this, and this, this D S L U diaries and drawings they did, that, that original pond was there for, just for Buckingham State's, just for that, like Westminster, top to bottom or whatever. So I'm not even sure how, how Worcester Prep is draining their fields into it, but again, rumor has it, and everybody loves to talk, and I can't verify anything, that they filled in some of those ditches that are back there when they redid those fields. Now, where that water's, I mean, I, I, you know, it's just, it's a mess. And as he said, I've probably spent way too much time on this, whether I'm right or not, I'd be more than happy to share what I know so far, you know?
Thank you. And I'm sure, uh, we will do our best, uh, once we get started, to address this. You know, I've been hearing, West Street flooding sets Charlotte towns.
Yes. He's my, he was the cross the street from man, took over for him.
Did we have anything from the press?
Matt? Darrell wants to speak.
Go ahead, Dar.
I'll offer to add some information. Um, I'm well versed on that drainage of that area, that area. The bigger picture we're talking about, two adjacent separate affiliated drainage areas, the area that drains behind your, those houses in between Westminster and, um, West. Yes, that, it's worth getting over to Abbey. Um, it, it's not, you know, it's, it, between those backyards, the design show, it should be, you know, a squig, in his, his back. So that's, that's the problem with the backyards. Uh, the bigger problem of the drainage from, we, that we get from the, the school, um, I don't believe it goes into that pond, it certainly appears that it does, but-
Oh, it really does. It can drain-
Unless it backfeeds, unless it, unless it fills up and goes in. So the pond itself, for that, for that development, receives, uh, drainage from the, from the Westminster Abbey. Um, and then the drainage from, there's a culvert in those, there's a, two ditches that come from the school, that come into the pond, and then there's a pipe that goes under that. That goes over to alongside of the pond, and then goes over down Abbey to West. I agree, it certainly appears like that, that pond receives it, and it very well could from backfeed, but I'm pretty confident it's not, that, that pond is not designed to receive the school drainage. So, no, I, I want to, I'm going to be part of this, that's the bigger, um, I'm hesitant to offer ideas, because I feel like some of the discussions we've had, and the trench has been misinterpreted. Um, the, the trench, I certainly would have not recommended that without confirming a compliant plate. Um, all my force minds would be, dig a hole, make sure you know that plate, they go through it, anytime they infiltrate some hatch, I'd do that, you know, it's going to do a certain... So, I, I know this area very well, I've walked it many times, um, the bigger picture is the drain piping along Abbey, west down to the culvert, the other side of the drainage place, we've, we've known that for, for some. Um, the drainage in, in yards and stuff like that is, um, yeah, it's, it's blocked, or it's, you know, settled, filled in, sealed, whatever. I don't know, but it's, it's, that's my opinion, is that it's, it's just not getting to, across the back of the rock. And the, the handcuff that, you know, the residents have is that, yes, it's a swale of property, property, so the residents got to get together, or some, some plan, or work with the town, I don't know, but we need to get that water all along, you know? I don't know. I, I'd be happy to, I volunteer my team, but I'm here to, you know, to come out. I, I always volunteer my time to come out, just like, visit everybody. So if you guys, I would recommend we visit one rain day, you know, get our brothers out there and, and witness where this water is not draining to, and where it's piling, and you can walk through it. That's got to be my call.
Anytime it rains, just feel free to come out, you know, absolutely.
That, that's the towns.
And anybody, anybody can come by anytime, um, and take a look.
Probably not, because the road gets blocked.
That's right. Wear your defense.
Well, Jeff has this unique implication, and I'm sure that we will be, be talking with, with, with him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything from the press? If not, for the first time in a long time, someone other than me will make the motion with your, your, your sentence. Motion? Okay. We, we, all right, sir. Thank you all.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you something, stop always giving me the word of advice.